Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Virtual Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble, Acting Director of Planning and the planner's assigned to tonight's petition. PC thirty-six dash twenty-one Moto Inc. has been postponed until further notice. If you received a postcard regarding this petition, you will receive another one with the new hearing date. PC thirty-seven dash twenty-one Insight Real Estate Investment Properties LLC will be heard tonight as scheduled. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at an executive meeting in January. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site, then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allotted fifteen minutes. Then persons in favor, in opposition, or with concern will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Please note, you may only speak one time. To indicate you wish to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all, opposition speakers have spoken. Only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a poll will appear allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor, in opposition, and with concern. This is not a vote. It is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's petition, PC thirty-seven dash twenty-one Insight Real Estate Investment Properties.
Good evening. This is PC thirty-seven twenty-one Insight Real Estate Investment Properties LLC. It is a request for a change in zoning from C-three to C-eight for a three-point-five-acre tract of land on the southeast quadrant of Lindbergh Boulevard and Boar Park Road. As you can see from the county context map, this site is in South County, near the city of Green Park, and there is the site outlined in red on the aerial. On the land use map, you can see there's mainly commercial development fronting both Lindbergh Boulevard and Tassan Ferry to the west with residential development behind. Much of the commercial development in the area is used for vehicle sales. Here's the second aerial where you can see some of the commercial and residential development around the site. This is looking into the site at the public hearing sign facing south. This is west up Lindbergh Boulevard. This is looking north across Lindbergh Boulevard. This is looking east down Lindbergh. This is also, you can see the entrance to the site. This is looking south into the site. Lindbergh Boulevard is at my back. We're still looking south. This is at the east property line. You can see the neighboring bank. This is looking west at the existing structure on the site. Still looking west, this is the loading dock at the rear of the existing structure. We are now looking south at the rear property line. This is at the back of the site, looking north. This is looking west at the rear portion of the site. This is towards the western property line, looking at Boar Park Road. This is looking northwest on the site. And lastly, this is looking west at the intersection of Lindbergh and Boar Park Road.
Okay, thank you. The petitioner here?
Yes. Good evening.
Mr. Giannini, are you going to be sharing the PowerPoint for the petitioner?
I, yes. What I need to do is screen share or?
Okay, I've just made you the presenter, so then you'll just click Share at the bottom of the bar by your mute button and then click whatever application you're using for the presentation.
Okay. Yeah, let me, let me pull this up. Now, I'm having a little bit of an issue pulling up the PDF that we sent over.
Okay, let me try to pull it up on my end. Okay.
Oh, I just got it.
Okay, I'll make you the, I'll give you back the presenter role.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that. Open up three of them on me.
You should be able to share it now.
Okay, you guys see the site plan for commercial redevelopment?
I don't see it yet. Did you click the share button on the bar in WebEx first?
There it goes.
There it comes.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Joe Giannini. I'm with Insight Real Estate. We're a build-to-suit developer of the Chicagoland area, and we are presenting this project for an adaptive reuse, which would include a petition for site plan approval and a rezone from C-three Shopping District to C-eight Planned Commercial District. As presented, this is in, you know, in line with the other uses contained along Lindbergh Street or Boulevard and Bowler or Road, Park Road to the west. So, we're petitioning for a automotive company as the tenant for the property will be sell, working to sell, the sale of new and pre-owned vehicles and the repair and servicing of customer vehicles within the property. The existing site will be adapted with some additional parking spaces to accommodate the storage of vehicles for sale. The existing building will be modified. That's a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot building. We're not expanding upon the building. We're actually taking out a small bump out from the building, so reducing the total square footage, but introducing some new openings in order to service vehicles within the building. And that would, we kind of drew out this dark black line within the building. Vehicles will enter through a service garage door on the northeast side of the building and be circulated through for service and come out on the west side of the building after completion of the servicing. The vehicle sales component and sales floor and customer service lobby and waiting room will be on the north side, contained within the north side of the building. The existing site was overparked as far as to begin with for the use and is overparked based on code for the adaptive reuse. I believe the requirement or the projected requirement based on our concept plans for the building right now is at sixty-four parking spaces, and that's based off of the sales area and service base within the building or the projected service base within the building. There's currently two ADA parking stalls, which I believe doesn't meet code currently, so we'll be introducing a new ADA parking stall in order to meet code requirements to, for customer parking within the site. The remaining parking lot and the expansion of the parking lot area is for vehicle storage. And no, you know, everything as far as use will be contained or servicing will be contained within the building. The hours of operation are typical to a commercial dealership, eight to six P.M., Monday through Friday, and, you know, Saturday and Sunday component, ten to six, typical. So, we're still looking to finalize those hours of operation, but that's what's typical for the tenant. Included with the site plan, we've introduced some landscaping at the rear of the property to help with screening and then some additional landscape islands to meet code requirements for the parking lot. Everything, you know, we're proposing will meet code as far as setbacks, parking requirements. Signage will look to maximize as far as what's available to us by code for both site signage and building signage. The proposed building, though not expanded, we will be raising roof or a portion of the roof in order to facilitate vehicle lifts within the building. So, the raised roof portion is approximately half the building. That would be the south portion of the building and would be raised four feet in total. So, existing right now, I believe the tallest element of the building is a parapet wall of nineteen and a half feet, and the area we'll be looking to raise is currently twelve feet, eight inches, and we'll be raising it to about seventeen feet. So, it's, will be less than the existing highest point of the building. Beyond that, I believe, you know, code requirements are, we'll look to have our civil engineer, you know, work with MSD to provide stormwater elements as necessary for the reuse and to design in order to facilitate drainage for that south parking expansion as well as landscape code. And I think we're going a little above for, to facilitate some screening on the back end of the property. So, I think that's all we have. I did bring my civil tonight as well, if there's any questions related to the site plan.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Yeah, Wayne Keith. That's where they're showing right now. Can we see the elevations?
Sure. So, this is the existing elevations to the building, and this, so currently it's CMU block wall for the majority of the building and then the rear portion, if we're looking at the site plan, this rear square area is in addition, that is a prefab metal building. So, we'd be, we'd be raising the roof on the prefab metal addition in the back and then a portion of the CMU block wall, and you can actually see it here. So, right at the midpoint of the building. And then beyond that, we'll be introducing some garage doors so we can have vehicles enter the building and a new storefront in the northeast corner for entry there to the showroom.
Are you showing any changes there on the front elevation?
On the front elevation, so this is, this would be the front that faces Lindbergh. And really, the changes would be in relation to signage and then paint. On the side elevation to the east, this would be a new storefront entrance. And then we'd be introducing a garage door, which would be the entry point for servicing to the, to the location. So, again, this would just be signage and paint in this area. And then towards the rear of the building or the south portion of the building, that's where we'd be introducing about four feet elevation to the roofline in order to introduce vehicle lifts within the building.
All right. Let's get one more question. Do you usually use a locally trained workforce when you guys move around the country for your client?
Yes, they would have their locally trained, they'd be looking at local for employees within the facility.
No, I'm talking about construction changes and?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we've been working with CEC. We actually, we did the fresh time across the street on Lindbergh, and I believe we used, we used a general contractor from the St. Louis area. The name escapes me right now, but that's typical for us is to utilize, you know, consultants within the market. The one exception may be the architect.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, commissioners?
How about the lighting? What kind of lighting are you going to have there? And you mentioned, were you speaking only the signage for drive-around or the signage for advertising the company?
The signage for advertising of the company. So, we'd be, we identified a few locations as far as where we'd be introducing signage or proposed right now, and that would, you know, meet code. There may be a service entrance sign, which we have indicated above this garage door here, which is the main entry for service or for servicing of customer vehicles. And then we'd look to have signage on the east facade over the storefront as well as the facade that faces Lindbergh.
Okay, anyone else?
What, are there any plans to deal with the existing parking area? Landscaping, repaving, that type of stuff?
Yeah, so there is some areas where the existing parking lot is in rough shape. We're introducing landscape islands, and then we'd be, we're coming up with a plan to repair the existing pavement. So, some of it's based on MSD code, so we'd be, you know, we'd be looking to repair some areas that are heavily damaged and then, you know, surface other areas that may be in better shape towards the front of the store. So, you know, the intent is to have a like-new parking lot.
Right. Is there, is there currently site-proof fencing along the residential area that, what's?
There is fencing along the residential in the back. I believe it extends for the majority of the property line, and then we intend to put some fencing around the south parking lot area as well as landscape screening or heavy landscape screening.
Okay.
And if I read this right, this is proposed uses for electrical vehicle facility?
Yes, there will be electrical charging stations at the facility, and there will be the sale of electric vehicles. So, it is with a large, you know, Fortune 500 automotive company.
That should be my question. Is this a, will this be a franchise or manufactured-owned facility?
It will be with the, there will be no manufacturing at this.
I mean, will it be owned by a manufacturer or will it be owned by a franchisee?
It will, it will be owned by the Fortune 500 company, so.
Okay, that's fine. About how many vehicles do you anticipate new and used for sale on the, on the site?
As far as storage?
Well, cars or vehicles that are there for, for sale.
We would be utilizing all the parking spaces in the rear for storage of vehicles for sale. So, I'd say a hundred or more based on our layout. So, that is a critical component for the, for the operator and for the tenant. So, that is why we're doing the parking lot expansion so that they can have those vehicle or those storage spaces for vehicles for sale.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone else? Okay, see, no, we thank you. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Melissa, you want to?
Yes.
With speakers?
So, if you would like to make a comment or ask a question regarding this petition, you can click the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list. It might be in the bottom right-hand corner of your screen, and if you don't see it, you can send me the generic host. You can send me a message. We'll start with Bethany Cuban and Chris Cuban. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Bethany, you are unmuted to give your comment.
Thank you so much. This is Chris Cuban here. In addition to being the treasurer of the Neighborhood Association, the Five Oaks Neighborhood Association with eighty-two homes, I'm also a business owner and of two different companies, a property management company and a public relations firm. I speak for myself tonight, not the entire neighborhood. However, the neighborhood has great concerns with this development. Currently, I would like to say that we're not opposed to the development. We're opposed to certain aspects of this development. Some of those concerns include, and we'd like to either have you impose restrictions or prohibit these aspects of the development, the use of loudspeakers. There is another dealership that we can hear further away that we would not like this noise to impact the neighborhood negatively. So, we'd like to have you either restrict or prohibit the use of loudspeakers. The bright lights are a very big concern for us. We respectfully request that the development require all lights face away from the homes and were shaded by some form of, more of a landscaping of some sort. One of the biggest concerns that I have is the stormwater runoff. This has caused flooding in that area as well as all the stormwater that goes from that property goes behind my house on Pebble Oak as well as the four houses that are adjacent to me. On occasion, in the last ten years, stormwater has flooded our houses multiple times. There's also an MSD substation behind our house. When our, when this area floods because of high storms or lots of rain, the substation subsequently stops pumping sewage. This causes a huge problem because sewage then goes into our homes. I'm greatly concerned that there are no water basins that are on the map or the diagram of the development, as well as the increased parking lot will force more water to be runoff into my backyard. There is a stream that goes to a sinkhole, but when there's so much water, it all goes into our home. So, we'd request that you really deal with this situation, more so than just the limit, the minimal regulations that MSD would impose on you. Also on this map, this diagram, it shows that there's a cell phone tower to be erected. I am opposed to any cell phone tower erected on this property, whether it be for lease or for what, I mean, I understand that it's a business trying to use all revenue streams, but this is going to negatively impact our entire neighborhood. It appears that the development is really doing the minimum amount possible with a twenty-foot barrier. I personally request a forty-foot barrier between the homes. This is going to really affect property values and noise for our subdivisions. We'd like more of a barrier there. Another concern is the increased crime, potential theft of cars and having a barrier erected so thieves or individuals cannot hop the fence into the neighborhood here. The last request that we have is that there are members of the subdivision that own small businesses, whether it be a landscaping company or a concrete company. We respectfully request that you reach out and use the businesses of some of the owners in the neighborhood. So, those are my comments, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Good, thank you.
Okay, next will be Glenn Hendrickson. Glenn, you are unmuted.
Hi, everyone. My name is Glenn Hendrickson. I also have Andrea Hendrickson here with me. We also have some concerns, obviously, as you see on the map, where we're one of the main homes that actually butt up to the development. We're also not completely opposed to the development, but we do have quite a few issues of, of concern. So, for instance, I know that you guys were saying that there was fencing in the back of the property, but there isn't. The only fence that is there is, is my own six-foot fence, and I can see the whole lot as it sits right now with a six-foot fence, and that is with the current amount of land that is there. And now with the parking lot being moved back and being even closer to my home, it really affects not only my safety but our privacy. I mean, we just have some issues with that. The, the proposed part also behind our home is that you were just going to leave some of the current shrubbery that's back there. I mean, really, all of that is overgrown brush that has been dilapidated by the current owners. We actually had to trim back the current stuff because it actually grew through and broke our fence, so we had to replace some of the fencing. We would like you guys to remove all of that. Um, we would like you guys to remove all of that uh overgrowth and actually plant some real shrubs there. It is actually full of garbage and everything too. Um. Uh, we would like you to have a, a larger fence installed. Uh, at, at minimum eight feet. Um, like a white vinyl like the rest of the dealerships that are, are near residential homes along Lindbergh. Um. You know, we we would also like some more shrubly, that's shrubbery that's a little bit thicker to try and, and cut down on some of the noise. Um, Chris already mentioned the lighting. We would want to be pointed away from the house hopefully because our bedroom actually faces the building. Um. I, I know that these are the, are the minimum standards that you're meeting, but if you look at the other businesses that back up to this neighborhood, they are coded C eight, but they also have a barrier of at least a hundred feet before they get near a home. So we, we would really like if, if there was just a, a larger barrier between our fence, our property to the development. Um.
Sure. Um, yeah, so this is Andrea Hendrickson, his wife. Like I said, our biggest request would just be at least an eight-foot fence to provide us some sort of privacy as well as we are really quite requesting a lot more trees, um, specifically like the green giant dujas, like maybe two rows of them, um, to create an entire wall for us for not only light and sound, but just to give us some privacy. Uh, we have three children and we would like to keep as much privacy in our yard as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I think that's, I mean, I, I, I don't know if it has been talked about. I know it's heard plenty of times that people are worried about their property values. We're very concerned with our property value. If we ever go to sell our home, I mean, people probably four out of ten people would walk away with this developing, development being this close to their home. So we are, we're just really concerned, so, but. Um, that, that's all that we really have and we appreciate you guys listening to us.
Okay, thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, next will be Eric Fay. Eric, you are unmuted.
Okay, uh, thanks a lot, uh, commissioners. Uh, thank you for taking the time this evening. Uh, I don't want to be too redundant, um, because I know these hearings can, can drag on, but as Mr. Cuban, Mr. Hendrickson said, uh, about lighting, the PA system, the, the landscape buffer, the
I think we lost audio.
Private, can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make the point at um the, the li- the, the landscape being buffering and things like, like that, 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 that's really the minimal, Mr. Gene, and he's correct that it does, does meet code code, but it it's it's kind of the minimum requirement. So in the, in the C eight commercial plan and commercial district, as you all know, you can and impose some additional stipulations and um on developments like this, and, and that's all all the, the the neighborhood behind and the development is asking for that. You know, with the uh, with the uh, 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 parking lot expand ending with have a great concern of about the light lighting in the buffer and then all so as as Chris has mentioned, the stormwater runoff. So uh storm farm water runoff is a particular other prob- problem there in our neighborhood could be because every be home home in a a neighborhood be I mean easily to the south of this parcel all this sewage.
Chairman, we're hearing about every other word.
Yeah, you're breaking up quite a bit.
The lifts station in the ne- neighborhood. If storm arm water in a and they it's that lift station then then the sewage backs up up in the neighborhood. So we would really request.
Okay, we'll ask them to address these items on rebuttal. And we can also deal with them later as well.
I don't see any other speakers at this time. If you do want to make a comment, um, you can raise your hand. Additionally, if you'd like to submit comment via email, uh, you can do so, you can send it to planning@stlewiscounty.gov. But I don't see anyone else at this time, Mr. Hilsinger.
Okay, uh. Petitioner, can you uh? Answer some of the items brought up? Probably the first one is the loudspeaker.
Sure, yeah, I, I listed it out as everyone was speaking and uh, you know, I appreciate, you know, and understand the concerns and, you know, we're willing to work with everybody um, on the project uh going forward. Uh, the, the couple items, you know, just to start with the loudspeakers, I don't anticipate that being an issue. I'll check and verify. Um, but I don't anticipate any loudspeaker use uh, as far as other audio elements. I mean, we're, we're interior to the building, anything that's um, being performed in, in the facility and we're not um. Uh, I don't believe the expansion as far as the parking lot, uh, the intent's not to have that as a driveline is utilized in any capacity. Um, it, it'd be for vehicle storage, so I, um. Audio, it shouldn't have an issue or um, or bright lights um, in, in that back parking lot area. Uh, we will be uh, performing a photometric study uh, for the property uh, utilizing the existing lights that are there uh, currently uh, for, for sight lighting. And we will be um, introducing additional lights only to uh, both for security reasons and um, to meet code requirements. Uh, with a photometric plan uh, and code requirements, it's, it's typically a zero-foot candle um, at property line and we'll, we'll work with staff uh, in order to ensure that, you know, there's no spill over of light uh, to, to the south. So I understand that concern and there's, there's ways to accommodate that as far as shielding on the lights, so it is only directed in uh, one way. Uh, the, the cell tower element, so that's um, the existing survey uh, is actually shown in a lighter um a lighter uh, pen line on this uh, site plan, so that cell tower element has been onsite. Uh, we're actually looking to eliminate that. So the, we've requested that the seller uh, provide a termination letter uh, with that cell tower operator, so I, I, um, that will be eliminated from the site. Uh, the the forty-foot barrier item uh, as far as a buffer, uh, that is something I, I don't believe we'll be able to accommodate just because of the the requirement for the additional parking. Um, so we, you know, we'd, we'd have to look to utilize the existing twenty-foot um, residential buffer that is currently on the property. Um, and just uh, look to, you know, provide accommodations in that area. Uh. A- as far as increase in crime, uh, we will have fencing um, around the um, vehicle or stored vehicle areas. Uh, so that that it would enclose that uh, from the outside um, or, or foot traffic um, but from, from the lot. So there would be some, some type of um, fencing provided along um, the perimeter of the uh, parking lot area. Uh. The um, utilization as far as landscaping, so this, this is a, um, you know, and I have to have my um civil speak to this as well. I don't know code offhand, but I believe that the landscaping in the rear, we, we introduced that, that that wasn't a requirement of code. We, we did it to help satisfy because we did see that there was a, a gap in what was existing uh, for landscaping. So I, I understand that that's more shrubs on the west side of the property between residential and the proposed pavement area. Uh, so we can take a look at, you know, what can be done for that area um, as well as, you know, uh, further finalize uh, the landscape uh, that we're proposing on the eastern portion of the property or the southeastern portion of the lot. Um, but that was something that, you know, we were uh, implementing that landscaping uh, above code requirements in order to help satisfy um, or help screen the to screen the property. So it, it will be an improvement upon what's existing. Um, and that's, you know, that's our hope here is that, that, you know, um, that we'll be improving the property both in a look um, and then as far as use as well, that, you know, most of the operations will be uh, towards the front of the facility. Um, and that's really where customers enter and cars are parked. Uh, the rear area is just storage and I understand, you know, slightly, uh, but I think that it's gonna be an improvement upon what's, you know, um, what the existing sightline is from the properties and you know, we, we, we're looking to work with everyone and, and do what we can to accommodate that. Uh, as far as stormwater, uh, I don't know um, about the MSD interceptor or pump. Uh, but we can look into that uh, and just, you know, you know, that, that might be an item that I don't, I don't know the history of, um, that might be an item that MSD knows about and, you know, we'll, we'll at least reach out to them. Uh, but in, I, I don't anticipate being able to um, perform anything as it, it's likely off the, the property. Um. But for stormwater, we, I, I do believe um, based on what we to- uh, toped for the property, we're, we're at a lower point than anybody south of us as the grade does go and drop three feet as you come into this um, uh, come into the site here. So I think we're three feet lower than anybody else, so I don't anticipate um, impacting um, the current stormwater system, but we do have um, some requirements from MSD for um, it uh, detention and infiltration. I can let my civil speak more to that. She's on the call as well.
If you could. Please.
Uh, so that would be Dan Cozatek with CEC Engineering.
A good evening, good evening, everybody. Dan Cozatek was civil and environmental consultants or CEC. Uh, we're on the, the development team here and uh, prepared the plan that you're looking at. As far as stormwater uh, and MSD requirements, we have submitted this plan to MSD for a conceptual review and have received a comment letter back. Um, it's that first step just to get an idea from MSD on what conditions may be there, what, what issues downstream. Um, nothing came back on the sanitary sewer uh, as a comment there or lift station, but one did come back on the stormwater. Um, there are known downstream uh, issues in the stormwater, so this, that's a known condition in MSD's records and as such, we are required to provide a volume-reducing stormwater BMP for this project. So based on the new uh, parking lot that's shown and new impervious surfaces that are proposed there, uh, we will be designing and constructing uh, a new BMP. Um, the selection of that is yet to be determined, but it could be pervious pavement or underground stormwater chamber, something like that uh, that satisfies MSD uh, volume-reducing BMP uh, requirements. Uh, that was likely going to be placed there at the low of the parking lot. Um, what you can see on the plan there, there's a double kermit right by where the hand is. That's the low in the parking lot, so it's likely in that general area uh, to capture the first flush of runoff and infiltrate some percentage of that down into the ground before it heads downstream in the storm system. So to maybe better answer the, the concerns from the neighbor is we are going to be doing above and beyond what the standard blue book requirements of MSD due to some of those uh, downstream capacity issues.
Okay, so hopefully you can make an improvement there.
Yes. If we can reduce the runoff i- in that system.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hilsinger, we had a couple more hands uh, come up.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. We'll have Carol Leiston. Carol, you are unmuted to give your comments.
This is Carol and I live directly in back of the proposed area and I've been impressed with things that you're saying that you're going to do that sounds much better than original, li- looking at the plans. And talking about the water, the area in back of the bank next to this property. When water has run off of Lindbergh so much, that area has filled in back of the bank. Actually have seen it fill up all the way to the top, water coming over to the grass area and up to my concrete area where my garage is. That's the only one is really, really, really a bad storm. But that is one of the cons- big, big concerns is the water runoff. I also appreciate the idea that there would be a fence and one that would be at least eight or ten feet high that would be blocking out uh, your cars and the distraction there and the, the evergreens. Um, my yard is full of evergreens in the back of it. That's my natural way of hiding, looking at Lindbergh, so I like the idea that you're going to be planting shrubbery back there. Yeah, but it did seem like you were very positive and a lot of the things that we were concerned about, so I think that's good news right now. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, next will be Tony Durkers. Tony, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to kind of uh, you know, go with the flow of, you know, the, the neighbors of what they said. Um, so I just don't want to go through and reiterate everything, but uh, you know, their concerns are my concerns. Um, or probably a couple of questions. Um. Looking at this, there are no entrances or exits uh, off of Boar Park. Everything is from the main Lindbergh Road, if that is correct. And um, I, I think you said something more about storage to the back of the um, facility, so um, kind of a concern of, I don't know if they're gonna do any auto bodywork uh, there at all. I know maybe just servicing vehicles, but um, you know, storing, you know, car parts and stuff, and I don't know where also trash receptacles would be or any kind of hazardous materials or batteries, any of that, um, you know, that they push that to the back towards the neighborhood, so um, just kind of wanted to see where that would be as well, especially, you know, trash um, for commercial, you know, comes very early in the morning sometimes too, so didn't want any uh, additional disruptions to the neighborhood or anything like that at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, those are all the hands I've seen, yes.
Uh, will you do any auto bodywork here?
Uh, yeah, so it will be some, some collision repair. It won't be major typically, um, but we will uh, we will uh, have some uh repair work. But it will be contained within the building. There will be nothing uh, as far as uh, storage exterior of the building.
Will you put it on a paint booth?
Not, there's not one anticipated at this time.
So you won't do any painting?
Not at this time.
Okay. What about sales of parts?
Uh. There, there will be sales of parts. Um, I don't know, is there something specific that you're looking for?
No, I mean, those dealerships have a parts department.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can't, I can't rule that out. There will be, uh, sales of vehicle parts.
Okay.
But, um, you know, most, most of the work is, is maintenance related. Um, but, uh, we will have, uh, some, some components of that, um, repair. But it will all be contained within the building and we don't, you know, this isn't anticipated for a collision repair or, um, no, no wrecked vehicles in the parking lot. Um, you, you know, that, that's not the intent here. This is, this is a, um, uh, service and sales center, really. Um, so, and we, you know, a- again, I, you know, I'm looking to work with everyone. I, right now, the, the trash isn't anticipated, you know, to remain in the existing location. So I don't see any change, um, to, to what's being, uh, performed, uh, for the site now. And, um, there shouldn't be, you know, any change to the generation of trash from what's been used for the commercial property in the past. Uh, and, um, you know, I, we, you know, we're, we're looking to, you know, help facilitate the project. And really it's, you know, uh, the, you know, we're, the, the tenant and the operation, I, you know, I think is going to be less, less intense than what's, what's been on the site in the past. So, um, so that's, that's the hope here and hopefully we can improve upon what's the look of the property right now.
Okay, uh, commissioners, any questions? Okay.
Yeah, Wayne, Wayne Keith, I have one question. And, and, uh, presenter might have mentioned this. Will there, or will there be, uh, charging stations in the front of the building for the folks that have bugged the vehicles there?
Uh, there will be charging stations. Uh, the location of them has not been determined yet. We've done it in different ways. Some have been wall packs on the building, uh, and some have been freestanding within a parking space, but it will be closer to the building and up in this northeast corner typically, uh, or internal to the building as well. Uh, so I wouldn't, you know, the intent, you know, is to, uh, keep, keep the use, uh, limited to, uh, the front. Um, so, uh, and, and this being just storage of vehicles in the rear. So.
Right, thank you.
Wayne, I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, the batteries, I don't know if you're gonna, uh, put them in the trash or would they have a separate container? If you have batteries to dispose of.
Uh, do you know what? I don't, I don't know offhand, but I, um, anything that's performed would, would have to, you know, um, be in accordance with, um, uh, yeah, with, with guidelines from the state and, and building code and, um, uh, any, anything else, environmental or building code. So I don't, I don't anticipate any issues there.
I would think that'd be a hazmat. A battery would be hazmat, wouldn't it? It couldn't go in the regular trash, I don't believe.
Uh, no, no, uh, I don't think, uh, a battery or a car battery could, uh, go into, uh, a dumpster or a typical dumpster. I think it'd be, um, uh, uh, some kind of, uh, service for that, um, i- if there is existing batteries.
Wayne is Bill. Um, I, I was just wondering, uh, it, as most car dealerships, uh, are they, they typically have a, a car wash or something within their facility? Is that planned for this?
Uh, yes, there'll be a, a wash, uh, within the building. So it's, 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 um, not a full car wash, um, but it, there will be a wash station, uh, within the building.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? They've seen that. We thank you, uh. Now you wanna, do we need to take short hands or?
Yeah, so when you leave the meeting, a survey should pop up asking if you are in favor, opposed, or have concerns regarding this petition. Um, and that will be made part of the record for the, uh, commission's report.
Is that public or is for?
You, it'll appear to you as well.
Okay.
To the petitioner.
Okay.
Okay, uh, with that, we need a motion to adjourn. Anyone?
So moved.
First, all those in favor?
I.
I.
All right. I just have it and we're adjourned. Till next week. Thank you.
All right, see the commission in one week.
Indeed.
Take care.